It is five thirty and I'm gonna call this meeting the Stevensville City Council order. We're gonna start off with the pledges and I've asked Councilman Reesman to take care of that.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state on one indivisible.
Thank you, sir. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor David Wattman of Erev County Municipal Alliance.
Thank you, sir. Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with grateful hearts. We thank you for all the times you have led us through confusion, chaos, the unknown, even the life-threatening pandemic. You've guided us through all the way, the changes, expansions, investments, the challenges to our safety and you've just seen us through all these difficulties as we work together, the civilians, people of this community and the government, law enforcement. We pray, Father, your hand will continue to bless us. We thank you, Father, for the service of our mayor. We thank you that when he was asked to come and allow us to pray for him, that he came forward and humbly submitted himself. I thank you, Father, that you testified at that time that he would run unopposed. And his comment, well, whether it's still time, I said, no, you will run unopposed and it will be a sign to you that you were sent by the Lord in a time of division when the one side could not agree with the other. You are gonna be like a third choice, a third opinion. And Father, you have fulfilled all of your promises and he has lived through your destiny for his life. You said, Father, in your word, that you would, we would reap what we sow. I know, Father, that personally, he went before your throne on my behalf to comfort me in the loss of my wife. And so, Father, we say, press it down, shake it, and double it, and bless him for the blessing he's been to each of us individually and all of us together. Now, Lord, we look to the future. You have spoken into two mayors in many years of service and we expect your hand to direct us into the, coming into the new leadership. We can only expect that your heart is inclined to lead us, but our heart is inclined to hear you and follow you. We pray that the process would be civil. We pray that those who seek to be served will be eliminated, those who have personal agendas will be exposed, but those who have the heart for this city and maybe possibly as it has been, a heart for your love of this city, that we could work together in the peace that comes from Christ. And so, Father, we ask for your protection in the days to come. We ask for your guidance. We even welcome your discipline where it is needed. For you have said that you judge the hearts of your people and in this, the world knows that you are real. So, we offer ourselves, all those who believe, please judge. Find us one thing, for we know that we can find forgiveness in the mercy and grace of Jesus Christ. And then the world will know you are real and you rule in the hearts of your people. So, pray, Father, for us and magnify your name on earth as it is in heaven, in this place called Stevensville, Texas. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, everyone. Next up, we have Assistant General Discussion. We do have Julie Haringa. If you wouldn't mind coming up.
Could I pass out a map that would be helpful?
Absolutely.
I saw how they already passed yours out, so.
Ms. Haringa, if you would state your name and address and you've got three maps.
My name is Julie Haringa and I live at four fifty Tab Street here in Stevensville. And part of what I was going to say this evening, I already was directed to Mr. Williams, who's probably gonna be my best person to answer these questions, but I'd still like to present what I have so we all are clear on what I'm speaking about. So, council, Mayor Protem, I am here to get clarification and to make a request both regarding the stretch of road in front of my house. It is the eastern part of Tab Street between Hillcrest Drive and North Dale Avenue. I highlighted it in yellow. I would like it clarified and documented whether this stretch is part of the county or the city, and maybe it's already clearly showing, but I realized the confusion initially when I asked Commissioner D. Stevens of Precinct One to put a speed limit sign. As that stretch is straight and prone to loud motor acceleration, the signs went up, but only in the area west of Hillcrest Drive. Mr. Stevens regrettably stated he could not help me since my stretch of road is in the city. At a later time, I called the Stevensville Dispatch Line for help with a road disturbance. I was told the city could not help me since my stretch is considered county. Upon hearing my dilemma, the dispatcher kindly helped me. Thus, I asked that it be determined and clearly documented for all to know and see which area the stretch is in. And this leads to my request and felt need for a speed limit sign on the corner of Northdale Avenue and Tab Street. It is highlighted in green. There is an old crooked T-post there now. I don't know what that used to be. The signs put in the county area are for thirty miles per hour. I ask for no more and preferably less than thirty. Please let me know, and this is where I wanted to know which department, and I've been already led to the man, and I thank you in advance. He's going to send me an email with the map, I guess. But I'd just like to end with a plea. It's not really related, but many of you know me and noise in that. I just plead that all drivers, anyone listening, refrain from louder than normal motor noise out of courtesy and obedience to the laws against such action. And a reminder to the public, if you experience a disturbance, city and council dispatch lines are always open to report problems and they're very kind. The City of Stevensville Dispatch non-emergency number, in case it's confusing which one it is, it is two five four nine one eight one two seven three. And that is just a good way for non-emergency situations. They're very willing to help. So, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you very much. First item on the agenda, consider acceptance of the resignation of Mayor Doug Savine. As we all know, we received Doug Savine's, Mayor Savine's resignation letter earlier last week. This time, I'm actually gonna open it up to council so they can say what they want about Mayor Savine and then we will consider the acceptance of his resignation. Go ahead.
And I just wanna thank Doug for the guidance and the friendship and I appreciate all the very long phone calls and text messages and help when I had questions and we will miss him.
Ms. Burke.
Doug was a good mayor. He looked at, he, I'll never forget the first time I actually met him and we were talking about the city and he said, you know, the only way we're going to be able to solve a lot of problems here in the city is to grow our way out of the financial issues that we have with future growth in the community. That is, that future growth has been one of the things that we have stressed now for at least six years and it has moved the city much forward, very much so. Doug was one of the instigators of that. He, he was a good friend. He, I think, probably listed with all of the council people here and he did with me and Leanne and I'm sure the rest of you see that too. He was, he was a good leader. He sometimes pushed us to make decisions pretty quickly and everything and, which was good. We kept things moving and, and all, but I think it was all done good. I'm very happy for him that he, that he has chosen to spend time with his kids and grandkids, considering his health and whatnot. There are certain things that are more important than getting up here and that's, and that's certainly one of them. But he was, he was a good friend and is a good friend and we will miss him. Life goes on and we're gonna do the best we can from now on.
Ms. Reesman.
When I, when I think of Doug, I think of, he was a man of faith without a doubt. He had a tremendous work ethic, a strong leader, and he was always available. He was always available when he needed to talk or visit and I always respected that. I mean, he would pick his phone up and, and if he wanted to talk to you and he had ideas, he wanted to share, he did a good job of sharing and communicating those ideas. And so, I wish him all the best and having a, I know what it's like to have grandchildren and I know he's gonna have a great time with his grandchildren now and that's what, that's what this, this is all about is, is family. And Doug is a family person and I, again, I respected him tremendously and I always admired him with his faith.
Ms. Burke.
Dedication and drive as, while we've seen Doug from day one, he was willing to help, guide, assist, whatever I needed. I don't have a political background as it shows brightly and he's helped me with that. Lots of great plans, lots of great leadership. I'm gonna miss having him here, working with us. Hope he enjoys his grandkids and hate that he's leaving, because of why he's leaving, but I'm glad he's getting to spend more time with his family.
Thank you. Ms. Burke.
Doug's been a great friend to me, a great mentor as I moved into this role. I'll definitely miss our lengthy conversations about many different topics. He hesitated to throw, he didn't hesitate to throw any idea off the wall, will this work, could this work? And I think that post-council, post-means, staff, and thinking about things differently sometimes and figuring out ways to get things done. During his time, when we look back and I look back now, I know we've talked about it under, you know, his leadership, this council and directing staff, probably pushing in a T billion dollars in infrastructure projects that have been taken on and completed during that time. Really not another time in our city's history that even adjusted for what economies were at different points in time that much was tackled in that period of time. So, I think we accomplished a lot. Appreciate everything the people have us to do.
I just wanna take a minute to thank Doug for being a great mentor and friend the past three and a half years that I've served on council and beforehand, I reached out to him and he was more than willing to meet and talk about all the things that are involved in city politics because like being, I didn't have a real big political background, but I was willing to serve and, and help our community and city. He was willing to sit down and talk to me and explain everything to me and it was really much appreciated and I wish him and his family the best of luck in the future and I know that he's got great things still ahead of him.
Ms. Reno.
I'd like to thank Doug as well for his leadership and service to the City of Stevensville's dedication to the City of Stevensville and hope that people are inspired by his example to take part in, in the city leadership, you know, to be on, on committees and, and sign up, run for, run for office, get up here. We, we need help, you know, and we need, the only, the only way we do it is if people volunteer and it's like Doug did. He was tireless, a champion for the city and we need people like that and he, he inspired all of us, I know, to take part in, in the leadership of the city. I want to thank him for that.
What's next?
I'm probably gonna miss Doug for a reason different than the rest of you. I won't have anybody now to harass about being older than me. So, I, I'm really gonna miss that. I know he won't, but I will. But in all sincerity, Doug and I, on the council and then as he, as he was mayor, I've served many years with him and, and I watched him grow from council member into mayor and it does take some growth to move from one seat to the other and I watched him do that. I, I think Kenny Weldon was a big mentor for him and I think he helped him move, make that transition maybe. But Doug worked very hard for the City of Stevensville. It was his passion and his wife, Cheryl, had the same passion for the church and for the work of the Lord and I know that his kids, his daughters, share that same passion. And I, I'm a little bit jealous because he's gonna get to spend lots of time with his grandkids now and really enjoy them. His daughters have been encouraging him for some time to move closer and be able to spend more time with them and he'll be able to do that now. I think I can speak for all of us and say that we'll miss him, we'll miss his leadership, we'll miss his ability to work through things and come to a solution. It may not be the solution that everybody wanted, but come to a solution that we could all live with and that is no small task. But he's done a good job for the city. I wish him well and I hope he enjoys the time that he has with his daughters and sons-in-law and the trips that they take and then with his grandkids also.
Thank you. Just wanna add, you know, Doug was a, was a great friend to all of us up here, great mayor. He definitely has a servant's heart, has a servant's heart, still does. He, and he, he wasn't afraid to tell you when you messed up or when, when he, when he didn't agree with you as well. I don't, when he teaches Bible study at church and I don't show up for Bible study, he would let me know. And, and he is just a, a good man and I tell you, if you ever run around the Capitol with him, you know how fast he walks too. So, we're gonna, we're gonna miss you, Doug, and we know you're not, you're not gone. You'll come visit, so we look forward to the first time you come and see us and we're just waiting for that day so we can, we can honor you properly. So, thank you very much. And with that, I will consider a motion to accept Mayor Doug Savine's resignation.
Mayor with a heavy heart, I, I make the motion that we accept Mayor Savine's resignation and send him with our best wishes.
One second.
We got a motion from Mr. Nix and a second from Leanne. Mr.? Mr. Greenall? All opposed in favor? All right, we got a motion. Any other discussion? All those in favors, yeah. Opposed? That passes. Thank you so much, Doug. We appreciate your leadership. Second item on the agenda is consider approval of the order of a special election for November 4th, 2025.
We would request that council approve the order of the special election for November 4th, 2025 for the purpose of electing a mayor for the unexpired term.
Any discussion?
We need a motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mayor, I make the motion that we call the special election for the purpose of electing a mayor on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025.
Motion by Mr. Nix and a second by Ms. Smith. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, next item on the agenda would be to consider designation of Tech 21 voting representative. Mr. King, would you like to handle that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council, as you know, we are members of the Tech 21 Transportation Coalition. It's working on projects like 377 between Stevieville and Granberry, other transportation projects. It's been a great partnership for us. For the first couple of years, Mr. Martin Clinton was designated by council as the voting representative. After that, Mayor Levine has been the voting representative. So we'll need to name a new representative. Lately, Ms. Turp is been helping us out quite a bit with that transportation coalition. In fact, she recently attended in-person meetings in Lancaster last week, last week?
Yes, sir.
And so I think you would like to throw your name in the hat?
Yes, sir.
Do that and so that I'll ask that you guys designate a new voting representative.
Any questions for Doug? Mr. King. I just want everyone to know that I've, I've done this and it is a very long day and, and fun. And you get to meet a lot of people. And I would actually like to make the motion to appoint Ms. Turp as our Tech 21 voting representative. Got a second by Mr. Cook. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, Ms. Turp.
Thank you.
Next item, Chief Isbell, consider approval of available permit for Concord EMS.
Mayor Protem, council. Mr. Cranston with Concord EMS. I've been in communication with him about being present tonight last week and up through this morning. And he has had an issue come up and he couldn't be here this evening. So he sensed his regrets, but he couldn't be present. I did reach out, Mr. Nix, you'd ask about their permit, their, their licensure, provider license. It's current. It is current through DSHS. I checked with DSHS previously and again today, and it is current through 27. They are sending me a, a new copy. We'll upload that and get that in the city secretary's office with the permit.
Okay.
I did want to cover what we look at in, in the, our ordinance to, to permit ambulances. DSHS regulates ambulances and they fall into different categories depending upon their staffing, their equipment and their, their ability to provide a level of service. And I can tell you that it's, it's very highly regulated, all the way down to the type of vehicle, how it's laid out, the exact numbers of each piece of equipment down to Band-Aids. Everything is highly regulated. I know this because I sat on the governor's EMS and trauma advisory council for six years that advised DSHS on EMS care. There's everything from a BLS ambulance, basic life support with, can be as, as, as minimal as an emergency care attendant, all the way up through a mobile intensive care unit, which is what Stevieville Fire Department operates, which is at a minimum, an EMT and a paramedic. And in between that, there's various levels of BLS, BLS with ALS capabilities. There's ALS, ALS with MICU capabilities. So there's different licensed provider statuses for ambulances. In Stevieville, you've got Stevieville Fire Department. We run all the emergency exclusive. We run all the emergency calls for service. Outside of that, we've got CareFlight, ground transport. They are licensed as a mobile intensive care unit as well with paramedic service. However, they are inundated with inner facility transfers. We rarely see them in town. If we do, it is to pick up and to go to another one of THR's facilities. Outside of that, there's no other DSHS licensed provider in Stevieville. There's other services, transportation services, that's not regulated through DSHS. It's not a medical provision that, that's providing a medical service. And there may have been some confusion in that in the last meeting. So what we are considering is an ambulance permit that they would have the ability to have a level of emergence, of medical provision in a non-emergency transport where they're bringing folks from, that are, that are in some sort of medical state from a facility to home or from their home to a facility for care. And if anything were to transpire during that transport, they have provisions, equipment and protocols with medical supervision to intervene. So that's what would be at a question in the permit tonight. And I'd be happy to answer any questions further or, or go any deeper into of what, what that would entail. I, I did look back into through DSHS's, their complaints and the history of complaints. And I didn't find anything listed for Concord EMS. Now, their complaints are medical provision driven.
Any questions for Chief Isbell?
In your opinion, is this a service that would benefit our city and your department also by having less demand for transport sometime in a non-emergency? Or do we do any non-emergency transport anymore?
So we're getting into a, we don't, we do emergency transports. We get called for low ac, what we would consider low acuity transports. You can call them non-emergent. We don't go with lights and sirens. There's a lot of those patients that could use a non-emergency tran, medical transport. Different from what's available today, that, that, that they're not in a medical crisis, but could be en route to a facility. And there's no provision for that today. So we do, we run a brunt of that. I'll tell you, we run a lot of that. Seventy-five percent of our call volume is EMS. Ninety-seven percent of that is basic life support. Probably eighty percent of that is somewhere in that low acuity range. We run a lot of low acuity calls. There would have to be a, a huge culture shift with a lot of the facilities and not calling us and calling, because there's not been a provider they could call. If, if you call for CareFly, they, they may give you a, you know, if they could, it may be hours out before they could come, pick up someone to take them for an appointment or a lab work or that sort of thing. So do we, we, I, I believe there's a niche to fill there that's different from, than what's available today. But, you know, making that shift is going to take a while.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions? It's the pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I would make the motion to approve the application for a permit for Concord EMS to operate in the city as a non-emergency transfer unit.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Nix and a second by Ms. Turp. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you. All right, next item is consider the city of Stevieville and SISD School Resource Annual Memorandum of Understanding for 2025, 2026.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Protem and distinguished members of the council. It is that time, as right before school starts, is that we renew our annual MOU memorandum of understanding with the Stevieville ISD. They will take it up before their board on the 18th. It is the same, basically almost exactly the same as last year's in that we will provide up to three police officers as school resource officers during the school year. And so right now, we have one full-time sergeant who, who is based out of the Stevieville High School. And then the other two will be filled by officers who are off duty on their days off at either Henderson or Central. And then depending on where is needed as floating with that, as that goes. And this is in conjunction with the Guardian program. So our agreements have always been, they provide the salaries and benefits and we provide the equipment in, in the basic aspect of that. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief?
Do we still have the officer in training that is planning to be an SRO?
We do not. Yes, ma'am. And it's devastating. Yes, ma'am.
We currently have, how many SROs?
We have one full-time SRO.
One full-time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What, can you explain what the plan is for the, for the other position? Because we were supposed to have two, correct?
We would like to, within agreement with the SISD, we would like to get to three full-time SROs. With our staffing issues, we're not able to do that right now with our vacancies and those that are in, in academy training, long-term training.
Okay. But if we're able to get another one online, this will cover the additional SROs.
Correct. We would be able to plug them directly in full-time. Should we receive a lateral SRO, which we are talking at least one right now from another agency, we would be able to plug them directly in full-time with this agreement. Yes, sir.
So is there anybody in training right now or in the academy that is wanting to be an SRO?
No, ma'am. And, and to clarify that, they're very, very new into their training also.
Any other questions for Chief Harris?
Oh, I'm sorry. One last one. So the two that will be, we have the one that's full-time that the school district will pay for.
Yes, ma'am.
So the other two, since they will be doing that on their off days, will we get any reimbursement from the school district for that? Or until we get one that's full-time there?
No, they cover all of that expense now.
Okay.
And so basically, we work that as if they were working a football game, special event. Now they pay them directly.
And you don't have any trouble filling that?
No, ma'am.
Wouldn't be here, so. Okay, thank you.
I entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we consider entering into the agreement with Stevieville ISD to provide the SROs in the annual memorandum of understanding for 2025 and 2026.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion by Ms. Smith and a second from, let's call it Mr. Greenall. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Next item, consider approval of hot funds request for Cowboy Capital Pro Rodeo Association.
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council, as I think you guys are aware, a couple of years ago now, we did a partnership with Cowboy Capital Pro Rodeo Association. And we did a land lease out at the 536 acres outside of town. And Mr. Decker, Mr. Andre and Mr. Clemmons kind of pulled off a miracle and built the fairgrounds out there out of nothing. And did a fantastic job with that and got stands up, got a nice arena out there. But we've had a problem the last two years. We don't have enough room for people. And kind of more people come today than, than we've ever had before. And last year, they were literally turning folks away at the gate because they're just, we couldn't squeeze any more people in. And I know Mr. Decker will come up here in a minute and talk about it. So over the last few months, Mr. Decker, Ms. Turp and I have been talking and kicking some ideas around. And so they have a plan to add more stands out there that are asking for investment from us with, with our hot funds. And this kind of expense is allowable because a lot of attendance, we're trying to drive it in from, from outside of town. So kind of our recommendation to council to consider, overall, they'd like to add 1,500 seats. But we can kind of split that in half and start with 750 and kind of see how that goes. It is expensive, but our tourism industry's been doing it very well. You have a very healthy hot funds fund right now. And so kind of the request would be, under your consideration, would be to fund 183,000 to go to adding stands for 750 folks at the arena. If, once we get those in, whether that's this year or the following year, if we can see that, yes, we're filling that up, then we can talk about further investment and move on to the other end. And so I know Mr. Decker's here, certainly able to answer any questions. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Chief, you have a thought to come up? Mr. Decker, sorry.
Mayor. First of all, I want to touch on Alan, or Doug. He was one that helped make our dream come true out there. We were looking for a home for, for ourself and, and for the city of Stevieville and to represent the city of Stevieville. Thank you to current and past council members for making that happen. And, and thank you, Doug, for, for being a part of that. So with that being said, yes, it was, you know, it was a miracle that we pulled it off, but we did. We built a state-of-the-art, really nice rodeo arena. We've got about, just about 1.8 million dollars worth of in-kind and some donation work. And so we, we put about 1.8 million dollars worth of infrastructure out there and we're very proud of it. It, it wears the city of Stevieville logo. We actually represent the city of Stevieville on a voluntary basis. And we are very proud of where we live and we're very proud of what we've built. Like Jason said, we just out, we've outgrown ourselves and we're just looking for some help. We've got some, some big events that we've got planned. We've got the first annual ranch rodeo coming up. This is going to be in conjunction with Rodeo Heritage Week that is probably top five in the state. And it's, it's going to be huge. It's going to be probably bigger than the pro rodeo. There's 40, 40 different teams of four contestants and all those contestants are going to bring their families and kids to town. So we're going to have that to be the opening weekend of the Rodeo Heritage Week. And then, of course, we'll have activities all week long and then finish up with the pro rodeo, pro rodeo this year. So bringing some really, really neat things to, to town and bringing some really cool things to that, to that event center. And we're just, we're very, very proud of it. And like Jason said, the last couple of years, I know for a fact, because I had a council meeting last night or a committee meeting last night, and we turned away probably 500 ticket holders last, last year because they, it was standing room only and there's, there was nowhere else for anybody to stand. So they, they wanted their money back and that's kind of what we're up against. So we, we put some stands in originally that matched the stands that we had at our, the old home at Lone Star Arena, that was about 3,500 to 4,000. So with our box seats, that's what we seat now. But we're, we're looking to seat anywhere between 5,000 and 7,000 per, per event now, per night. So that's where we're at.
Any questions for Mr. Decker or Ms. Turp?
Oh, well, I mean, you know, as I supported 100%.
Thank you very much.
Do you think we can get them up for this?
I doubt it. You know, we're, we're basically 45 days away from go time. So Southern Bleacher, a well-known bleacher company, they, they did the new football stadium. They did renovations of the Charlton Stadium. That's who we came in and, and did the bid on the work. I, I trust them. I've done some, they've done some work for us in the past. Got a personal relationship with those guys up there. So. a personal relationship with those guys up there, so I think they're the best in the business, and they, they've got the track record to show it, too. So, with that being said, I mean, we're, we're getting, we didn't get bids, but we went with the very best that there is, so, and they're very familiar with Stevieville and working with Stevieville as well, so.
I have one question. How many events out there are y'all hosting here right now?
So, right now, it's just the pro rodeo, and we have another rodeo in March, which is the UPRA rodeo. We've been presented the opportunity to have some PBR events out there, about three a year, and we've, we've been asked to have some patiories, some buck and bull and buck and horse patiories out there as well. So, it's, it's growing, we just need to get the facilities up, and like Jason said, we've, we're two years young into this thing, so it's, it's a work in progress. We literally started from the ground up, and we're very fortunate to be where we're at now, so.
Yeah, I agree. We got Southern Bleachers at Charlton.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, if you, if they give you a, a type of a timing?
So, I forget the gentleman's name, he was one of the engineers that came out there and looked at it, but he thought we could probably do a 60-to-90-day turnaround on, you know, that was on the, that was on the entire project. Basically, what we have now is we have bleachers on each end of the arena, and then on the long side, but we wanted to wrap around and close in and make it kind of a bowl-type situation. So, stage one would be one set, stage two, so probably, as fast as those guys are, you know how that goes. I mean, they could have it up in 45 days.
It does take long.
For sure. Yes, sir.
You have to squeeze a little bit.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Well, and they will also be adding in the boxes.
Oh, yes.
The skyboxes.
Yes, well, that's, that's going to be, the show committee, I don't know if y'all are familiar with the show, it's one of the biggest fundraisers, if not the biggest in Stevieville. They're going to do, on the, on the southeast side of the arena, they're going to put in skyboxes, and that will be a luxury item for businesses in town to, to buy during special events. And that'll be on there, Don.
Any events y'all can hold up there, plan to hold up there a year?
As many as possible. I mean, like I said, right now, we're, we're still kind of trying to grow, we need to put in some RV spots, we need to put some stalls and stuff in, but that being said, it is an outdoor event, it is an outdoor venue, so people are kind of scared of having it during the spring, you know, because of the weather, but, you know, they have one of the biggest UPRA rodeos in March, and we had three-and-a-half inches one night, so we went ahead and had a rodeo anyway.
How many skyboxes are you going to put in?
So, right now, I think their plan is to put eight.
Eight rodeos?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that would be on the show committee themselves, they do that through fundraising, and what their actual plan of attack is on that is, during the show, is auctioning those off for each event that will be going on out there.
Go pass them.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I can't tell you all how much notoriety that this little arena has had throughout the North America. We've, we've been featured in the pro rodeo cowboy sports news. I don't know if y'all saw the, the Facebook posts, and they came to town and did a video and promoted Stevieville as the Cowboy Capital of the world, and we're extremely proud to be a part of that, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Decker? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Rich King or Ms. Turp? My pleasure, council.
I would make the motion that we approve 183,000 to go towards building stands at the Cowboy Capital Pro Rodeo Association Arena.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Turp, and a second from Mr. Carr. Any other discussion?
From Hot Funds?
Oh, I'm sorry. Should have added that to my, to my motion. Do I have to say it all over again?
Yes.
Okay. Then I make the motion that we award the Cowboy Capital Pro Rodeo Association 183,000 from Hot Funds to build stands.
Still give that to Mr. Carr, I got a motion by Ms. Turp, and a second by Mr. Carr. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next agenda item, we set the maximum proposed tax rate for 2025.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, members of council, as you know, we're coming into budget time, and unfortunately, we're going to have several series of meetings for you guys coming up, starting next week. But as part of that process, we always come to you this time of year, and we ask you to set the maximum tax rate that you will consider as you go through the budget process. It can be lower than that number, but it couldn't be any more than that number, so we, we ask you to consider that. Ms. Harris has been working diligently with the tax assessor to go through all the different formulas, punch in all the numbers, and so, the voter approval rate for next year will be .4000.
Even?
Even. Just the way the numbers shook out. So, that's what we would ask you to consider tonight as the maximum that you will consider as we go through the budget process.
Could you talk just a little louder?
Yes, ma'am. The voter approval rate for next year will be .4000, and so that's what staff is asking you to consider as the maximum proposed tax rate that you would consider as we go through the process. Again, it can be anywhere below that number, which you settle on and vote on in September, when you set a time and place for that, which will be your next agenda item. And so, with that, I'll, I'll answer any questions from you, and then for this, Ms. Harris would request a roll-call vote.
Any questions for Rich King?
Just a point of clarification, if I might, Mr. King, this, looking at this form, it's quite complicated.
Yes, sir.
The state has made sure of that, and it's not a whimsical number, it's a number that's come to, or derived, is the right way to say it, from a significant number of calculations, correct?
That is correct, sir.
And that, that's how we, how we reached this number, and this is the maximum number that we could use, that we are, that we were saying that we would consider using for the tax rate for the next year.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions for Rich King? My pleasure, council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make the motion that we accept the maximum tax rate of .4000 for the next tax year.
Got a motion by Ms. Next, a second by Ms. Smith, and this will be a roll-call vote, so we'll start off, place one?
Yes.
Place two?
Yes.
Place three?
Yes.
Place four?
Yes.
Place five?
Yes.
Place six, place seven?
Yes.
Place eight?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, sir. Alright, next item on the agenda is set date, time, and location of public hearing on proposed tax rate for 2025.
Just following along with the vote that you just took, we'll go through the process, and so that'll culminate with a public hearing and a vote on the tax rate, and so we would ask you to set the time and place for that as September 16th, 2025, at 5:30 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 298 West Washington in Stevieville, Texas.
Any questions for Rich King? My pleasure, council.
I know that we set the public hearing for the 2025 proposed tax rate for September 16th at 5:30 PM here in the City Council Chambers.
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Cook, second from Mr. Reesman. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Moving on, consider acceptance of annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024. Ms. Harris?
Mayor, council, you have in front of you, and it's also in the packet, our annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2024. I just want to go over a few of the financial highlights. If you'll look at page 16, this is our net position, is what I want to point out. Our total for the city is 133,589,826. Don't get real excited, because I'm going to explain a few things for you. If you'll look on that, 99-
Let's pick up the floor, though, I'm sorry.
99,488,372 of that is net investment in capital assets, so it's not anything that we can spend. And then, we have monies that are restricted for specific purposes, like tourism, and debt service, and things of that nature, and then so unrestricted is 25,318,568. Now, what this doesn't say is, we have, where we reserve 25% of our expenditures each year in cash, so that should there take a nosedive in some sort of revenue stream, or we have some, some major unexpected expenses or something, we have a means to take care of that. So, just that 25 million, please understand, there's an amount out of that.
And that's across all funds?
That's across all funds.
Which can't, several of them can't go mingle or anything like that.
So, if you'll look on page 18, total increase in our net position was 12,333,447. I want to take you next to page 19, which is our balance sheet for our governmental funds. Our general fund, our total governmental funds are, fund balances are 24,721,186. If you'll, if you'll look at our, our general fund, that is 17,380,636. Of that, we have some things, this gets breaking down to things that aren't spendable, like our prepaid items in our inventory, and then we have things that we assign. So, we assign some money for debt service, for debt that needs to be paid in the, in immediate future. We have set aside 250,000 each year for the last three years for the airport improvement project. We're kind of looking at, initially, I think, about a million dollars, our share of that construction project, we don't know for sure, but we started saving to build up to that. And it, and when the time comes that we need that money, we will transfer it out of the general fund to cover our share, our 10% share of that project. We always put in 150,000 worth of grant match, that if we get a grant that comes up during the year, and we, we need some funds, we, we have it available. You'll see that the combined dispatch is reserved in there for a million dollars, which we did budget in the current fiscal year, but I will tell you, we've already been told by Judge Huckabee that that amount is going to go up fairly significant. So, in that 14 million that's unreserved, I want you to keep in mind, again, we have a 25% of our expenditures, that's about 5.4 million dollars. So, that unassigned fund balance, really, when we take that into consideration for kind of what we might have to work with on things, goes down to about 9 million. Then, we will take you to page 23, our net position on our proprietary funds. The proprietary funds, the net position was 76,315,276. Again, over 68 million of that is invested in that, in capital assets, and so we can't really use that for anything else. We have restrictions for debt service, and then we had a flood protection plan grant that we were given, that the money was given in advance, so it's restricted until we could, we actually finished it this fiscal year. So, unrestricted was about 5.4. If you'll look at the water and wastewater fund, that unrestricted position, unrestricted position is 959, it's, it's under a million dollars. So, it's grown, so that, that's the rate increases that we've done, it has grown, but we've also spent a lot of that money on the projects, like the East Side Sewer, and, and the-
State Farm?
Yeah, thank you. So, we, we've had a lot of things going on, that's why it hasn't, even though we've done those rate increases, it hasn't grown as much as you would think, because we've, we've been doing projects. Stormwater drainage was 895,000, and then our non-major funds, which is our, our landfill and our airport, combined, they were 3.6 unrestricted. The airport was, unrestricted was 1.1. Again, you know, we're trying to save up to do project, that expansion project, and then our landfill was 2.4 unrestricted. We're trying to work on, since we got the permit approved, moving on with that expansion. Then I'll ask you to go to page 61, which is this, our comparison on our general fund, our budget versus where we ended up actual. So, our, on our revenue, we had a positive variance of 751,000. That was due to property taxes and sales taxes. We had some contributions, and then our investment income was a little bit higher than what we anticipated. If you look at the expenditures, we had a positive variance, again, of about 4.7 million. And if you look at that, you can look at your public safety, that's a, that's a big chunk of it, of 1.8 million dollars. We had budgeted the, the combined dispatch, but we didn't really, the project took a little bit longer to get up off the ground, so even though we had that savings, when you have savings, it goes into fund balance. We're spending it this year, though, or hope to anyways, right? Also, if you'll look at your capital atlay, that's 1.6 positive variance, so some of that was our senior center for about 700,000, which we spent this year and finished that project. We had some, we had put money in for 600,000 to do the remodel on the castle furniture building that didn't really happen, and then we had some other capital expenditures for like the park trail and the rec center that we rebudgeted this year and are spending it. And then if you look down at the, the transfers, you'll notice that there's a 500,000 transfer out that has a positive variance. We had, we had had to do a budget amendment, thinking that we were going to spend 500,000 in the airport fund, and we actually were able to get those grant reimbursements on some of the properties that we had, we had purchased back from the FAA, and so, that 500,000 is what you're seeing, is it, instead of going back into fund reserve, which it did, but we, we restricted it in that airport 750,000 assigned balance, so. If there is not any questions, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kim Knox, our auditor from BMY.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you all for having me here. I am an audit partner at BMY, and I had the privilege of serving as the partner on your engagement again this year. So, I know that most of you here really wanted me to go through that entire 130-page document. In the interest of time, I've gotten it down to one page of highlights that I will review with you. So, I want to start with the fact that on page one, you can see you received an unmodified opinion on your financial statements. That means that you received the highest level of assurance that we can give. There were no material, uncorrected misstatements in your financials. I'm also going to point out, since last year I went through a couple of internal control issues that we found, I just want to say that this year, all of those were fully corrected. You'll see that on page 121, that all of those are now resolved as, as of this audit. And in fact, this year, if internal control deficiencies are found that rise to a certain level, we're required to communicate those to you in writing. We did not have any this year that we were required to communicate to you in writing. I want to state that also, as you'll see on page 126, you received an unmodified opinion on compliance and internal controls over compliance, so that's related to the single audit of both your state and federal awards that you receive. If you spend over a certain amount of grant funds, we're required to do a compliance audit, so just to say two thumbs up on those as well, no compliance issues, no issues with controls over compliance. So, going down into the next section, implementation of new accounting standards, so one of the ones that was issued this, was effective this year, was GASB 100, just related to the reporting of prior period adjustments. So, they kind of changed- So they kind of changed some of the terminology that we're required to include in our report if numbers are changed from a previous report that you have already seen. Upcoming accounting standards. So effective next year is GASBIE one oh one, related to compensated absences. And I'm only telling you about that one in particular because of the impact it will have on your financials. Previously, we were only, you were only required to report a liability for accrued vacation or comp time if that amount would be paid out in the future. This standard actually changes that, and say you're also required to record a liability for your sick time if you think people are going to use it in the future. So it becomes, it's supposed to match up the liability with when that benefit is earned by the employee. So that, that liability will go up next year, and you'll see that reported as a change in accounting guidance next year in your report. So just want to kind of forewarn you that that's coming, and don't be shocked if you see that number jump next year. The other one is GASBIE one oh three, just to mention it's coming, it's not effective until fiscal year twenty-six. We'll kind of change the format of the financial statements, in particular that first section, the management's discussion and analysis. It's going to make it more standard across governments. So just to make it for, easier to use for the readers of financial statements. The only other couple of things I want to mention are prior period adjustments. So again, that means we have changed something from the previous year. There's one correction of error, which is actually just a response to one of the findings we had last year, where we said, if you have spent money that was reimbursable by a grant, you recognize a receivable in the same time period you incurred those expenditures. So as a result of that, Ms. Harris recorded a receivable from, from the airport grant that she was discussing at the end of twenty-four. So that should, the, the change was just to put that receivable on the books, that money has since been collected. The other one is a change in estimate. Last year, I was telling you about, because that landfill permit had not been approved, we adjusted the life of the landfill assets down. This year, because that landfill asset was approved, there's a change in estimate, putting them back over their normal useful life. So just wanted to highlight those things for you, and then ask, open up for any questions or comments.
Any questions for Ms. Knox? I'm going to tell you, this is the second audit I've sat through with Ms. Knox. Been my pleasure, great to deal with. I actually tried to get her to give us a grade, and she wouldn't do it.
We passed.
But we passed, that's what she said, although I need a grade.
I said an unmodified opinion is your grade, I don't give letter grades.
We're going to give Monica an A regardless. All right, thank you, Ms. Knox, we appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
So I will entertain a motion to accept the annual comprehensive, comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. That's what it is.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nix, and second by Mr. Cook. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is presentation of citizens' budget requests. Do we have any citizen budget requests?
You have one that's in your packet. As councilors aware, each of your staff puts out a call for any citizen's budget request that was done. So you have one that was submitted to you. I'm not going to read the entire letter, but we have had a citizen that is requesting for the city to construct a dedicated agricultural facility to house animals for the Stevieville FFA and Eref County four eights programs. And then the lawyer goes on to explain all the benefits and reasons why. And so as we meet next week for budget hearings, certainly take that into consideration and direct staff as, as you feel.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right, Steve. It's your show.
All right. Okay. Mr. Mayor, pro temp, counsel, first item, you might recall, back in April, we came to you for a request to proceed with the annexation of a portion of the Fort Worth and Western Railway. This was after some discussions held with the railway staff on March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, and they understood our plan and were supportive of our, of our plans. So at the April first meeting, the council did authorize the city manager to proceed with that annexation, and this is through the powers granted by section forty-three of the local government code. And so once we had that authorization, staff left here, obtained a survey of the railway, the portion of the railway that we're looking to annex, and the annexation will basically be from the corner of two eighty-one, along two eighty-one up to the northern city limits line from County Road one seventy-seven. Once we had that survey, on April twenty-second, we sent the required notice to the railway agent of record, registered agent, with a sixty-one day notice to object. They understood this letter was coming. The sixty-one day notice has now expired. We had proof of delivery on May second, two thousand and twenty-five, so we're well beyond that, that sixty-one day notice of, of objection, and they very well understood that we would be coming to you tonight to request annexation of the railway on the August fifth agenda. Reason we're asking for this is because it will position us to look at other properties to the east of that railway for voluntary annexation in the future. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Suffice to comment, a community, a city like Stevieville can annex property unless it's asked for and initiated, but it also has to be contiguous to existing city limits. And any property to the east, i.e. where some of the industrial property is, could not be annexed, even though they requested it, into the city until the railroad parcel could be done.
That is correct. Yes, sir. Has to be contiguous.
Just to clarify, railroad-
And I appreciate that. It does, if we considered any annexation in the future on the east side of that railway, we would not be able to do it without annexing the railway into the city limits. And so that was the, the intent behind it was preparing for future opportunities should growth come our direction. Great question, thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? Mayor, ten motion.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp, I'd like to move that we, the council through ordinance number twenty-two-five-oh-twenty, which is the annexation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cook, second by Mr. Greenall. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Next item is application number PD eight-nine-two-seven and eight-nine-two-eight. Applicant Ryan Hill, representing Quattro Soto Properties LLC, requesting a rezone of property located at six forty North McCart, parcel R three-three-two-six-six and six-four-six North McCart, parcel R three-three-two-six-five being S five-seven-zero-zero, Shopper, Shepherd and Collins, block eleven, lots two B, three and four, to the city of Stevieville, Eref County, Texas, for multifamily, R three, to planned development.
Thank you, Mayor. So a little background on this property. Conceptual plan was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission for this one point two-six-seven acre development on June eighteenth, and then the applicant returned on July sixteenth to the Planning and Zoning Commission to present the development plan. The applicant is now requesting the rezone be approved along with the planned development. Mr. Ryan Hill was the applicant, but he, he's not here tonight, but his partner, Mr. Craig Barnes, is here, and he will be able to answer any specific questions relating to the development. There's a few things I want to run through, and in your staff report, which is on page one-eighty-five, we've included a comparison there of what our standard requests or, would be, or standard requirements would be for this type of development, and what they are requesting. And so you see there are some deviations there, a few concessions that they're asking for. I'll run through them very quickly. They're asking for, we, we allow fourteen units per acre, they're asking for fifteen point eight on this one point two-six-seven acre, so it will net about two additional units to what we would normally allow. They're asking for some, some latitude on the landscape plannings. Instead of using our approved species list, they may want to use something a little different than that because they're planning on doing some serascaping possibly. We do ask for two spaces per unit, they're providing those, which you'll see on the site plan. Basically, it's a one-car garage with an adjacent parking space, and then they will have additional parking for guests. They are asking for a twenty-one foot to twenty-six foot wide frontage, where we normally require one hundred foot, or I'm sorry, thirty foot of frontage. They are exceeding our minimum square foot per home requirement quite substantially. These are four-bedroom units that they're looking at. Their setbacks vary a little different from what we would normally ask for. We ask for front and rear to be fifteen. They're reducing that to ten foot, but they are providing a landscape buffer with a privacy fence. You might see that they included on there that they're having a two, a two-foot setback from the front garages. That doesn't really apply because the fire lane and the service into this development will be a private road, and so those garages will encroach to that, or come out to the, the private road with a two-foot difference from, from the edge of pavement. Roof decks at thirty-five foot, which is compliant to our way of calculating the building height with the average plate height and the ridge line. They're asking for a twenty-foot fire line, or fire lane, normally we, we require twenty-four to twenty-six. This property will be fully sprinkled, and so the fire marshal supported the twenty-foot request. They're asking, we require nineteen, fifteen percent of the site be open, which would be nineteen percent of this particular building site. They're going to be at twenty-seven percent open, so they're exceeding our requirement. Landscaping to be determined by the owner. As far as placement, staff has no real objection to that. Our ordinance requires fifteen percent of the total development be landscaped with thirty percent of that on the frontage, which would mean thirty percent of their total landscaping would be along McCart. They're going to push some of that back into the development and beautify that with parking islands and things of that nature. No objection there. The one thing that might be something that the council needs to pay particular attention to would be they are requesting a waiver of the parkland dedication fees. Generally, that's not something that staff entertains, you know, during the review process, and certainly only council could authorize that. If we continue through your packet, on page one-eighty-four, we have the site plan. The planned development standards are on page one-eighty-eight through one-eighty-nine. The development schedule is on page one-ninety with a target completion date of August twenty-twenty-seven. Then we have renderings on page one-ninety-one through one-ninety-six. All this information is incorporated into the draft ordinance. On July sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five, the P and Z Commission voted six to one to recommend approval. Be glad to answer any questions, and again, Mr. Barnes is here, if you have anything specific for him. Thank you.
I have a question for both Steve. What is, how much is the parkland dedication fee? What would the total be?
Fourth, sorry, four-fifteen per door.
Four-fifteen per door.
So roughly nine to ten thousand dollars.
Okay. Any questions for Steve?
Can you respond, Steve, when we are, Jason, and we leave?
No, sir.
Does parkland be at any time?
No, sir.
I can't ever call a time, but we've done it.
Typically, it's either a land dedication or a fee, and that determination can be made at P and Z. But no, we've taken a pretty hard line stand for that particular one, even when we're doing incentive deals. That's, along with fundraising, is what's funded, the inclusive playground that's part of six hundred thousand dollars in investment there. So, I mean, that fund was put together for a dedicated purpose, and it's certainly a thing of interest.
Any other questions for Steve right now? Hearing none, I will open this up to a public hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak for or against this project?
Craig Barnes, eight-one-zero-three Shelton Drive in Fort Worth, Texas. Yeah, no, we've been working really hard with, not only the planning, but also with the architects to put something out here that's, I think everybody would be really proud of. It's currently zoned multifamily, so it, it would be like the project across the street, twenty-four units to the acre, or twenty-four units could be applied to it. So we downgraded, reduced the number because we've heard the, the comments and the questions about the traffic and the, and the, you know, didn't want to overdo that. We plan on gating the property, so it's, it's really kind of a exciting project for us. With that, I entertain any questions that you might have?
Any questions? Take a second.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak for or against this project? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to consider approval of an ordinance rezoning property located at six-four North McCart, parcel R three-three-two-six-six being five, S five-seven-zero-zero, Shepherd, Shepherd and Collins, block eleven, lot four, six-four-six North McCart, parcel R three-three-two-six-five being S five-seven-zero-zero, Shepherd and Collins, block eleven, lot two B, and three to the city of Stevieville, Eref County, Texas, for multifamily, R three, to planned development.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we rezone six forty North McCart and six forty-six North McCart. Ordinance two-zero-two-five-dash-oh-dash-two-one.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Greenall, and a second by Mr. Barnes, is there any other discussion?
At what point can we make sure that the parkland dedication amount is not part of this?
Probably have done in the motion to state that, correct? Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Then I would offer an amendment that this ordinance be, the original, of, uh, motion be amended to exclude the parkland donation, I mean, parkland amount from consideration. Does that make sense?
Are we going to vote on the first motion first, or?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Mr. Cook, are you, are you making the motion to exclude the fee or to include the fee?
I might-
No, no, we include the fee.
To include, okay.
So it's not excluded.
Mr. Cook, I would suggest making worded as you move to deny a waiver.
Move to deny a waiver, then. How's that sound?
Well, I'm sorry, but I, I agree with you, but I wasn't following you.
Okay. We still need to get a second.
I got a second.
Okay.
All right, I got a motion. A amended motion by Mr. Cook, amended second, Mr. Reisman, to approve excluding the parkland dedication fee. Deny waiver of a parkland dedication fee.
Or deny.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Still got to get a-
How you vote on the motion?
Uh, now we got to vote on the ordinance, okay? So, motion. Really, my first day.
You've already got the motion, you're second.
Now I will vote on motion twenty-two-five-zero-dash-two-one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. We're good? We're good? Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. All right, next, uh, next item would be application number RZ-nine-zero-one-two. Applicant CCS Stevieville Properties LLC requesting the assignment of industrial zoning for the recently annexed property located at zero North US two-eighty-one, parcel R-seven-six-six-eight-zero, being approximately seven point five-seven-seven acres of the A zero-eight-zero-four Williams' MR survey of the city of Stevieville, Eref County, Texas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, pro temp, counsel. Just a little background here, we went through the process on a voluntary annexation for this seven point six-six-seven acres out on US two-eighty-one. Met with P and Z, they recommended the annexation, that was acted upon by city council on June third, as authorized by- as authorized by Chapter 43 of the Local Government Code, and that was annexed into the city limits through that action. Our city ordinance requires that we come back through the process and assign zoning within six months of annexation, and so the zoning of industrial was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission on July 16, 2025 by unanimous vote of seven to zero. Again, that was to assign industrial zoning to this particular parcel. If you look at the maps within your packet on page 225, 226, you'll see that this entire area was, it's, the industrial zoning matches the properties to the north and then also the land use, future land use. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, pro temp, be glad to answer any questions. This would just be tonight to assign the industrial zoning. Thank you.
Any questions for Steve?
Mr. Killen, does this zoning, is this zoning appropriate for the intended use or the proposed use for this property?
Yes, sir. There's a sign on the property, so I'm not saying anything that's not out there publicly. This is for a Valero station, and I think they'll have maybe some kind of food establishment associated with the Valero, which is pretty common in some of the, those type of operations. The industrial district does allow for both of those uses, but certainly for the convenience store. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm going to open up a public hearing. Is there anybody else to, here to speak for or against this project? Good? All right. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and consider approval of the, of an ordinance assigning the zoning of industrial for the recently annexed property located at Zero North US 281, parcel R76680, being approximately 7.577 acres of the A0804 Williams MR survey of the City of Stevieville here up County, Texas.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp, I move that we approve ordinance number 2025-022.
Motion by Mr. Cook, second by Mr. Greenall. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Sir.
Moving on to Development Services Committee. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, sir. Our, at our last meeting, one of the points that was brought up, the fee thing, had to do with the, whether or not we would change an existing building code, if you would, that had to do with whether townhouses need to be sprinkled, sprinkler system in place. It's not, the committee decided at that point not to make any changes because the requirement is there that it, that these, if you call them townhouses, apartments, that they are connected, much like the ones that you see off of Harvard Drive, sprinkler systems would be required in those. And that, so we made no changes, and so we have no recommendations to the council for that, and that's some of the.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Moving on to nominations committee, Ms. Smith?
Nomination's committee met on, met on July 15 to discuss a change, and I'm going to ask Mr. King to explain this change one more time so I don't get tongue-tied like I did last time. About the three days, 72 hours.
Yes, ma'am. Y'all remember from the recent committee discussion, we have a new law that goes into effect September 1 that affects when agendas are posted. So we've been operating under 72 hours for years and years under state law for all governing bodies. So council, our committee meetings, planning and zoning, Board of Adjustment, Economic Development Authorities, anybody that falls under the Open Meetings Act. And so it was common, we would post on, you know, Friday evenings for a Tuesday meeting, but it counted all the days in there. That was actually, you know, kind of the day, early Saturdays would have been the 72 hours. Our legislature, for whatever reason, undertook a law change this time that goes into effect September 1 that will require anybody under the Open Meetings Act to post three business days in advance of the meeting. So for us, for a Tuesday meeting, we will be posting on Wednesdays because it does not count weekends now. If there are holidays in the week, then that's going to back you up even further. And so that's a change we certainly have to live with on the, under the Open Meetings Act. All of our advisory boards are just at their advisory boards. They don't have any kind of rulemaking authority or legislative authority, but through council policy, adopted policy, we'd always stated we wanted our advisory boards to basically operate the same way as council did under the Open Meetings Act. If we have any number of boards, we have quite a few of them, and they're very active and meet a lot, and they meet on different days. And so what we've asked is that they're, the advisory boards don't fall under the actual statute. They, we operate on that way by adopted policy. So what we're asking for is a change in the council's adopted policies and rules of procedure to kind of separate those advisory boards out. And we're not saying we don't want to post agendas or anything else. We think that's very important and we need to. We would like the advisory boards to continue to live under the 72-hour rule because, one, we think that'll be easier for, kind of for us to keep up with, especially as we go through this big change for both this body and the number of meetings we do in P&amp;Z or VLA's, those kind of things. So we would ask for a change in advisory boards to go to the 72-hour notice, but follow the Open Meetings Act in all respects, other than, other than that posting. And really kind of ask that so we keep it on track.
That's kind of your recommendation, Jason, that we leave those alone.
No, I'm asking you to make a change in the, because in the acts, the way it's ordered is it says they have to follow the Open Meeting Act. Well, the Open Meetings Act is going to change to the three business days. So I'm asking you guys for specific wording to allow the advisory boards to stay at the 72 hours.
Where they are, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Posting notice, yes, sir.
They're not required to change. We are.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. King?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we change the wording of our bylaws to, for our advisory boards to have three, oh, I'm sorry, 72 hours instead of the three business days. And it's now, the legislation is making this change. Is that correct? Is that wording correctly?
I think that's right.
So I make the motion that we approve ordinance 2025-0-23.
I got that. Motion by Ms. Smith, a second by Mr. Turfy. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King, for your help on that one. And then I'll go ahead.
Awesome.
Do I have another one?
Leave that, leave that alone.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Monica, financial reports. I know you've already talked for 20, 30 minutes, but come on back here.
Mayor, council, you have in front of you the budget report for the period ending June 30, nine months into our fiscal year. As usual, our financial indicators are overall as, as, as good or better than anticipated. We received 300, 34,000 in property taxes in the month of June. That resulted in a 417,000 increase over the funds collected last fiscal year date. We're at 100% of our budget, slightly over, and that's about 82,000 more than we anticipated. We received 842,000 on our sales tax in June. That resulted in 155,000 or 2% more than the funds collected last fiscal year to date. We're at 79% of our budget. That's about 418,000 more than I would have anticipated. Of the 36.2 million in revenue received to date, 58% was received in our general fund, and 26 was received in our water and wastewater fund. We had 4% received in our landfill fund, and 3% was received in our debt service fund, as well as our stormwater drainage fund. And then both our capital projects fund and our hot fund were both at 2%. We have received 85% of our total budgeted revenue through June. That's about 3 million more than we had anticipated. That's due to taxes, licensing and permits, our charges for service, interest income, and other revenue. We've received 245 less revenue through June than last fiscal year, and that's due to some intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenue received last year. That was kind of a one-time that was not repeated this year and wasn't expected to be repeated. Of the 33.3 million that we spent today, to date, 48% was expended in our general fund, 36% was expended in the water wastewater fund, 4% was expended in our stormwater drainage fund, and the debt service fund, TIF fund, and the landfill fund all expended 3%. We've expended 62% of our total budgeted expenditures through June, which is 7.4 million less than anticipated, and that's due to personnel, contractual, and capital outlay. We've spent 7.3 million less on expenditures through June than the last fiscal year, year to date, and that's due to capital. CETA has received an overall 79% of budgeted revenue through June. That's 16,000 less than fiscal year to date. That's due to interest income, and it's 30,000 more than anticipated, and that's due to taxes. CETA has spent an overall 43% of budgeted expenditures through June. That's 40% more than last fiscal year to date due to personnel and capital outlay, and it's 362,000 less than anticipated due to contractual capital outlay and grant dispersments. Any questions?
Any questions for Monica? Thank you very much.
Mr. Brown, pro temp, let me ask you guys to back up. I did move you along a little too quick. You did approve the ordinance that pertains to the advisory boards, but we do need you to consider a change to your own rules and procedures to reflect the three business days that you will be required to operate under. And so you have a draft in your packet. And even if you didn't change, the state law still takes precedent, but we would ask you to match your, your own rules and procedures with what the upcoming state law is.
Any questions for Mr. King on that?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion that we amend our rules and procedures to comply with state law reflecting the three business days notification for posting.
Got a motion by Mr. Nick, second by Mr. Turfy. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you.
We have an investment report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I don't mind not speaking, but, so, before you, as you have in front of you, your investment report for the period ending June 30. Our total market value of cash and investments on June 30, 2025, was 43,238,831. We have that allocated, 4% in our demand accounts. We have less than 1% in cash money market accounts, 6% in certificates of deposits, 36% in Techstar Investment Pool, and 54% in our Techpool Investment Pool. So we earned 461,000 in interest for the quarter. The average yield to maturity for all of the accounts was 4.26%. When you take out the demand accounts and just use the investment accounts, that was 4.36%. We use a benchmark for, to see how we're doing, and that is based on the maturity of a three-year treasury bill, and for the quarter, that was 4.23. So we're a little bit above that. And then our average weighted maturity in, in days of the portfolio was 13.5 days, so we're extremely liquid.
Thank you very much. Come on up, Doug.
All right. Keep investing. That's good stuff. Howdy. How's everybody? Do you remember the quote? I just lost it. Not sure I'm going to get it, so I'll skip that. Never mind. August the 5th, we have some things that happened. Do you remember the movie Braveheart? William Wallace won four Academy Awards. I don't know if it was true or not, but it was based on a guy named William Wallace. On this date in 1305, he was captured by the English for trial and execution, but he had a lot of cool quotes, which is what I was going to read, and I don't get to now because I lost it already. 1957, American Bandstand premiered on ABC on this day. Everybody watch American Bandstand? Remember that? You danced on it, right?
Incognito.
There you go. There you go. 1966, Beatles released Yellow Submarine on this day. 1936, stepping back a little bit, Jesse Owens won his second, or excuse me, his third gold medal at the Berlin Olympics. That was kind of a groundbreaking time for America and for that time period. And in kind of a city-related deal, in 1914, on this day, the first electric traffic light in the United States was put up in Cleveland, Ohio, 1914. Pretty cool. I was going to read birthdays. I had several of them. It's really a good birthday day, but I think the only thing I want to mention is Lonnie Anderson was born on this day, and she just passed away, so I just wanted to mention her. And then everybody's crush from the Brady Bunch, Marsha, Marsha, Marsha was born on this day 69 years ago. Yeah, I know. Tell me about it. She was a hottie too for a while there. Listen, I wanted to make a couple of comments also about Mayor Savine, since we have a chance. We had an opportunity at CETA to work with the mayor in several different capacities. I think one of the coolest things was that we got to travel with him to Vegas and other places, Dallas and Fort Worth, and many other places on behalf of the city. And I could tell you, kind of echoing what many of you council members said, that he was definitely dedicated. He was definitely here for the sake of Stevieville, Texas. And there were very few people that could, that could sell the town in collaboration with us and did such a great job. And he was always very supportive outside of what we did about you guys and the strength of staff, the strength of the council, and the ability to move mountains if we so could do that. A little personal deal, after my dad passed away almost four years ago, you know, Doug became sort of a surrogate father of sorts. He really was there in a lot of different ways, and it happened to be about the same time that he lost Cheryl. And it was, so we had a kind of an interesting connection there. But since he was kind of my dad, I am going to ask for, to be in his will. So Doug, if you're watching, if there's any chance of that, I don't know. No, but he was a colleague and a friend, really worked on a lot of different things. One of the things he said very, we came in about the same time, almost the same month, when I came back to Stevieville and he ascended into the mayoral, mayorship. And one of the things he talked about was about ROI. He talked about always thinking about ROI, and he really wanted to have a business model. So, you know, we, we came back to run CETA and do things. We really were going to concentrate a whole lot on manufacturing and industry and so forth, but the city needed money, and we needed to find avenues to get money for different things. And Gerald, you were my chair at the time. We kind of had a little pivot there. We said we needed to concentrate a little bit more on the retail restaurant side of it, not just because those were great amenities for our community, but because we could get both the property tax that we all needed, but also we needed the sales tax that could be generated from that. And I think that our budgets and the ones that you'll be considering over the next few weeks here will be indicative of the growth in that sales tax piece, and particularly important because of what the state is trying to do in terms of, you know, good for the citizens, but not so good for municipalities in terms of limiting some of the property taxes, certainly putting caps and other things on our property tax revenue. That helps us with the infrastructure projects and other things that we need. Sales tax will be even more important moving forward. So it was a good pivot that we made. It was a good decision, I think, that we made collectively and collaboratively, and I think those are things that are going to pay off in many ways down the road. Recently, obviously, we had the great openings of Seven Brew, the Second El Corral, Amazon, and Dolce Panda, an ice cream shop. There are some others as well. But coming up, we have on August the 29th, Cavenders will open up in the stable. That'll be a good one because it's, it's a premier store of their, of their umbrella there of all the different kinds of stores that they build. This is their premier store. Obviously, in the cowboy capital of Texas, it makes a lot of sense, so we're excited about what that's going to. about what that's going to generate for our community in addition, and we hope that it encourages more of that from the outside world. It won't just be, you know, the cool thing about what we have is it's not just the twenty-two thousand Stevieville buying things. We get the advantage and the sales tax piece of your revenue to receive it from everybody. It's not just those that live here. And so our trade area has grown to almost a hundred and thirty thousand people that use Stevieville as their primary source for restaurants, for retail and everything else. And that number continues to grow. It was about eighty thousand I got here, we're up to about a hundred and thirty now, and that's continuing to bring in that money that's going to help with some of the projects that you guys will be considering very shortly. I wanted to read something on some restaurants, whether that's important, a couple of stats that you might have that impact us from a tourism standpoint, but also from just a general capability of capturing those people and putting them into some of our other retail establishments. Sixty percent of hotel restaurant diners were travelers over the past twelve months, whereas forty percent were local. So when you think about all those utilizing our restaurants, sixty percent of those are from the outside community, our temporary citizens. Forty-seven percent of Americans have booked a trip to visit a specific restaurant. So the coolness of having more opportunities here, being almost a foodie establishment in some degree, certainly compared to what it used to be for those of us that have been around a long time, it's nice to be able to have people come into our community and maybe stay the night because there are many more things to do when they arrive in our community. Forty-five percent of Americans have found themselves posting more about their restaurant meals than the sights of their trip. So when you think about people coming into our community for various reasons, they're actually, I mean, what's the thing, you know, food eats first, or the camera eats first, and we take pictures of our food, and we show who and what and all that. It's a big challenge to our restaurateurs to make sure that they are putting forth a great product, but it's also great for promotion of our community that we don't have to spend the money on because they're doing it. But I think it's going to be important to continue to watch how our new restaurants, when people say, I wish we had this restaurant, I wish we had that restaurant, the fact that they're coming in at all allows us to capture them. And what I really encourage, especially now that school is about to be in session, that we encourage, and I'm speaking to the entire public, encourage these folks that are coming into town to stay a little bit longer. Welcome them. If you have marquees or signage, welcome our Tarleton students and parents. Welcome those that come to our Stevieville High School games. Welcome them as they come in. Get the calendars that are posted all over through our own tourism websites here at the city, to other places, the Chamber and other places, and capture those folks because that's another opportunity to keep them spending more money in our community. Here's the deal, secret between just us girls here, if we can get other people to spend money, then we don't have to continue to raise the taxes as high as we'd like to or as much as we need to, right? We can get other people to help pay for some of this stuff. So let's really count on, and Ms. Durfee, the efforts with tourism is so important for that matter. And certain some of the things, and having run tourism departments before, I understand the value. You know, we talked about the arena earlier, when we used to bring in the world champion horsemen events, and the raining and cutting horse events from all over the nation into Stevieville. Those are things we need to go back to and see if we can continue to bring those folks in from other places throughout the year. Recently, we mentioned the Capitol and all the things going on with some of the changes that's been kind of alluded to throughout the course of tonight's meeting. I spent some time at the Capitol just last week, last week? Last week, yeah. Goes by fast. You know, obviously, the Texas government believes in the miracle, the Texas miracle is just going to happen automatically because we're Texas, and as a Texan, I mean, I think that that's all cool, but I think a lot of it is because of the hard work of economic development organizations such as ours, city municipalities, and the work that you guys do collaboratively. And they're trying to cut back a lot of those programs that they have, and they're also, as we mentioned about property tax and other things, that's again why sales tax is going to be so important, but also the idea, excuse me, the idea of continuing to capture dollars and use them as quickly and as efficiently as we can. And we're going to be investing as well, not only on the economic development side, but because we're a type B organization, moving forward, we can invest in the community in other ways as well. Many of you heard that came to our last board meeting. Some of the tourism things that we talked about before, and I wanted to mention this, I mentioned to Ms. Durfee a little bit earlier. Let me just make sure I have, yeah. We have, Mr. Reisman, you remember us talking last time about being in the Texas Rangers yearbook? Do you all remember we talked about that? We put an ad in that goes over to nearly six hundred thousand people will pick this up over the course of the year. Well, we thought that was kind of cool, but we had an opportunity to go a step further and go into the Dallas Cowboys. Now, I don't know if y'all knew this, but Dallas actually has a football team.
That's debatable.
Thank you. They used to have one, perhaps, but anyway, they're still going to get together apparently a few times this fall. We hope for the best, obviously, and it does draw a lot of people from our area and from other people, and, you know, it's always a good gathering place. They still put a hundred thousand people in at their games. And so we have also gotten into the Dallas Cowboys yearbook, and we did, we went a little step further this time. And we had to get approval all the way up to Jerry Jones because they did not allow us to talk about Cowboys, since they have kind of the, I guess they patented the word. I guess they're the only ones allowed to use it. Well, we kind of have our own Cowboys, so we played off of that and said, come visit our Cowboys in the Cowboy Capital of the World, and put a different kind of ad, and included a picture or two of some of the rodeo folks that you guys have sponsored, and so that's pretty cool. And then we also put some QR codes on this one at the bottom that allow us the opportunity to redirect traffic. We have one that comes back to our website with a lot of dynamic information that changes on a daily basis, but then also back to the city's tourism website as well. Because obviously, people there aren't all just interested in putting a business here, much like they're not all just looking at visiting, but it does give them both the opportunity to connect with Stevieville, and that's what we wanted. If we can get even just a few of those to connect back, maybe they'll make a decision to either come or invest. And certainly, as a tourist, they're investing. Obviously, as a business, they're investing, so all that is extra money that comes into our community. So those are, with that, I'll shut up for a little while, but we're doing some really neat things. We're excited about what's going ahead for this coming year. We believe it's going to be even a better year than we've had recently. I know that it's always a little tricky when you get into budget time, we have to be a little bit more conservative, but we believe there's some things coming online. We do have some, about a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of new projects that we hope to announce within the next hundred and eighty days. Sorry, hundred days. Gerald only gave me a hundred, but certainly within the next hundred and eighty days. That's going to be a pretty significant influx of new dollars into our community.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, guys.
I will consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we approve consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Greenall, second by Ms. Durfee. All those in favor? All right, perfect. Comments by City Manager?
Mayor Pro Tem, Council, we just wrapped up the summer concert, concert from the park. Had an outstanding season, and I want to thank Mr. Doug Montgomery again for partnering with us and leading that effort and bringing our other partners to the table with Triple Crown, Techstar Covota, First Financial, and this year, Dallas, Austin, came on board as a partner in that. It was outstanding season. I thank Darren and his crew for getting everything done on all those, and we had some kind of weekend nights this year, a couple of Saturdays, Friday thrown in there, Chief Harris and his department for being there and taking care of us, but had an outstanding season. And so with that, in our transition, and we'll get another chance to remind you, but early on in September is the Western Swing Festival that will be coming. And so get ready for that, and again, we'll have another chance to remind you. You guys check your calendars, we're going to have several upcoming meetings for you starting next Monday, but I think we're going to have to schedule a couple more for some other things. We'll get those out to you. City offices will be closed on Monday, September second for Labor Day, and I believe that's all I have, sir.
Ms. Durfee?
I just want to add on to what Jason said, that we appreciate Doug helping us and Darren and his crew doing such a great job with the concert series. I'd also like to thank Daryl and Ashley for putting on such a great farmer's market and car show this past weekend. It was, I always get calls and text messages about how wonderful it is, so thank you for y'all's hard work. Our Western Swing Festival is September sixth and seventh. We have some great acts, music acts coming, and I hope everyone will come out and enjoy some great music and dancing. And then I'd like to say good luck to the students that are starting school this week and next week, and a welcome to the Tarleton students that will be coming to town this month. I think move in is the, this week, and again, on the sixteenth, and then I think classes start on the twentieth, but I could have those numbers wrong. I just want everybody to remember that a lot of these kids are away from home for their first time, and, you know, they're kids, they're not always the smartest, but, you know, if we could show a little bit of grace and think if our kid was in another town, I sent all three of mine off to other schools, and we can just remember that maybe they just need somebody to knock them in the back of the head sometimes, and just be a smiling face and somebody that's comfort here, so. And that's all I've got.
Ms. Durfee?
Well, that's pretty good.
I know, sorry.
You covered a lot of ground here.
I did, sorry.
That's a lot of ground. What's left? The, just to echo that, I mean, we're coming up on school time again, and people are getting excited. I mean, there's convocations going on, there's students coming back, and I know move in maybe next week or the end of this week or something, but the way they're coming in right now, and moving in, and so that's good. A lot of activity is going to be going on, and everything, ballgames to whatever, so just as a note, and Jeff can, and Ashley can confirm this. What's Tarleton worked to us? Billions, billions. It's been the biggest driver of the economy for the last fifteen, twenty years. And it is the growth place right now for us with the new students coming in and additional growth. It is amazing when you see four to five thousand freshmen run across that football field in the first game of the year, and you see how many that really is, and it's just phenomenal. The other thing is, of course, high school and public schools going on, not only here, but whether it's in Huckabee or Lingaville or whatnot, it is, all of them going to get back, it's almost like activity is back. And so that is, that is good. And it was a sad point for us up here because of Doug leaving and our mayor, he was really a great person to be around and was a great driver and a significant help for all of us. We will miss him, but again, as we said earlier, we'll try to do the best we can up here, and we've got a lot of good people, I think, that are here around this table. And with your help and the people in the community, I think we will continue on. So that's mine, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reisman?
I don't know what's left either. You know, school is starting. I would remind everybody, you know, that we will be having school zones, so don't speed through them. We'll get a ticket here next week because you're used to just driving down through there when there's no school going on, and so remember about the school zones and the safety for our children in this community, because it's very, very important. Summer came to an end pretty quick, and all of a sudden, we're looking at starting school next week on the thirteenth at the high school and all the surrounding schools, and we just wish safety and the best for all of our students as they start their year. I do want to remind everybody when it's coming up that we are going to christen a new stadium at the high school, Art Braus Stadium, going to get ready to open up, and I know that there's some things coming out, that'll be some announcements when that happens, and so I'm looking forward to seeing that first football game over there. And I know they've worked hard at that stadium, and I know you've all been a big part of it, and it looks beautiful, and so you've got the Texans in the yellow jackets getting ready to crank it up, and it looks like it's going to be a real fun fall coming up.
Ms. Burke?
Yellow Jackets kicked off their tour days yesterday morning. We lived close by hearing the whistles, the band, the can fans, always a great time of year, and we look forward to that, wishing them the best this year. Also, on a much more personal note, in my lifetime, I've been touched six or seven times by this, twice in the last three months. I want people to be aware, there is a national suicide hotline that you can call anytime during night, you can text, just need to talk to people, it's nine eight eight. Just please pick up the phone and call. That's all I got.
Thank you. Ms. Burke?
Well, pretty much everybody on the first half of the table took everything on my side, but just want to echo that Stevieville ISD starts the thirteenth, it's next Wednesday, and Mr. Reisman mentioned the school zone, but do you please be aware of the students that are also walking to and from campuses or walking to their cars? Along with Tarleton, you'll notice there's more kids walking across, Washington not and across walk. Just be more vigilant for a few weeks or forever, really. Those are someone's babies out there, and we want to take care of them because they mean a lot to us. The last, this is the last week to sign up for Fall Sports at the Park. You can do that online through the city of Stevieville website under the Parks and Rec tab. And then, like Mr. Reisman said, that our first Friday night in Art Braus Stadium is September fifth against the government, but this Saturday, they are hosting the blue and gold scrimmage there, so if you want to come out and get a sneak peek of the stadium, it's free, starts at nine thirty and goes to about eleven thirty, and we'd like to see you all out there. Thank you all.
Ms. Greenall?
I'd like to also, with the beginning of school, wish good luck to all our students and especially the teachers as they begin this new school year, being married to a teacher. I know it's always an exciting and stress-inducing time of year, the beginning of the school year, but I just wish all those teachers out there good luck and a great school year.
Ms. Nick?
Everybody's been saying.
I want to say this is particularly an exciting school year for me, for my family, my daughter's last first day of high school, of public school, I guess, starting her senior year, started the watch rich year this year for the last time, and my son to play junior high football for the first time, junior high basketball, and it's exciting days. And don't forget, the first day of school, if you don't want to cook dinner, you can have a way of fish fries that night. So they're going to feed you all that night, so swing by and pick up at Newman Hall, four thirty to seven thirty for the United Way fish fry. Ms. King, you have one more thing, Doug?
Yes, sir. I wanted to mention that for the special election that y'all called, the filing period for the vacant office of mayor starts at eight AM in the morning and runs through five PM on the evening.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thanks, sir. With that, I am going to recess the Stevieville City Council meeting in compliance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Law, Subchapter D, Government Code, earnings Texas codes annotated in accordance with Section five five one zero seven four Personnel Matters to Deliberate the Appointment, Employment Evaluation, Reassignment Duties, Disciplined or Dismissal of a Public Officer or Employee to With City Manager. Section five five one dot zero seven four Personnel Matters to Deliberate the Appointment, Employment Evaluation, Reassignment Duties, Disciplined or Dismissed of a Public Officer or Employee to With Municipal Judge. In Section five five one point zero eight seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, Project PL. We will be back shortly. We will be back shortly.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, my move that we authorize amending the city manager contract as discussed in executive session and authorize Mayor Pro Tem to execute contract.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Now I'll adjourn us from, it's eight thirty-three. I'll adjourn us from regular city council meeting. Is there any action need to be taken from executive?
Thank you.